Okay, good evening, and I'll call to order the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. This is our last regular meeting of the of the year of twenty-four, and I'll be honest with you, I'm glad this year's over with. It's all we've had to put up with, so hopefully the new year will be a lot better. I want to, at this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, and then after that, our sheriff, I don't guess he could be here tonight? No? Okay, we'll have a moment of silence, and after that, and then we'll, if anyone would stand, everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, in which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty of speech.
I think the sheriff and I probably have the same thing, so he's not feeling too well. There's a lot of colds going around. He said a lot of his department had it, so I'm glad that we got some of our law enforcement here tonight, so thank y'all for being here. Okay, next order of business will be our public comment session. I'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes unless you're speaking for a group, and then you can have five. The first person that that I have here to sign up to speak is Dottie, is it Schaefer or Sw- shoot, Dottie? Oh, okay, 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 okay. Next person is Howard Nepper. And Howard, I understand you're speaking for a group, so you can you can go on, five minutes if you want to.
(inaudible)
Yeah, oh yeah. Appreciate y'all coming out tonight.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Howard Nepper, and I just want to give, just very briefly tell you who I am. I came to Haywood County in nineteen sixty-seven. My father, we were introduced to the Heinz Roelmann and Kaufman family in nineteen sixty-seven with Wellco Shoe Company, and my family and my father were part of Wellco for over twenty-seven years. And over the last fifty years, I've been associated with Haywood County. I had my home here for thirty years, and I've invested in real estate. I own a an Italian little takeout restaurant in Canton called Philly Italian Pastas and Subs, and I've done a lot of projects here. And I I love Haywood County. And I also wanted to mention something. Dottie's here because Dottie is the manager of my restaurant, and her son is the chief of police in Canton. And we wanted to share just a little short story about how the government of Haywood County helped us right after Helene happened. Now, the interesting part about this story is that one of the reasons that I decided to finally, after sixty-three years, retire in Haywood County is I was tired of hurricanes down in Miami. That's where I've been a mortgage broker for forty years and closed five thousand closings, and when I got up here in August, I told my mother that, shoot, I'm ready to come to Haywood County and get away from these hurricanes, and you know what happened to me? The biggest one in history followed me right over here in September. So anyway, to make a long story short about that, is that the day that the hurricane happened, we lost our water in Canton. And the first thing that I did was I knew we couldn't serve the public because it was declared down in Canton, was that what they declared, in a civil, civil authority was declared, we couldn't get anybody in nineteen twenty-three. So I went to Haywood County's Health Department, which I have dealt with forever, and I told them we wanted to get water, somehow be able to serve all the workers down in nineteen twenty-three, all of the people that were installing all the telephone wires and and everything that fell apart. And immediately, the Health Department contacted Raleigh, they came up with what they call a disaster plan. And the same day, the Health Department came down, and we were ready to go, and we started serving for at least fifteen days, all the workers, hundreds of them, that at least they would be able to have, you know, food and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the Health Department acted immediately. We then had the Haywood County Sheriff's Department, was unbelievable, including the Canton Police Department. They were making sure that we were able to get in, and everybody was able to have communications. We had to contact the Building Department for many reasons, and they were right on the money. Now, I have dealt with the Haywood County
That was, that was
I have worked with the Haywood County government for thirty years, and it's one of the top governments in the country. The Building Department is unbelievable. I know Todd, who knows me. We did the half a million dollar project with my motel. We built our, my building for Philly Italian. The Fire Marshal is, Mr. Messer is unbelievable, the Health Department. Haywood County has one of the best governments, and we had people calling us, actually telling us how happy they were with the Haywood County Commissioners, believe it or not. We we simply can't tell everybody on how wonderful my experience has been with Haywood County government. And no government's perfect, I can tell you that. I know that for sure. I mean, Miami's got problems that you wouldn't believe, but Haywood County is a special place. And why am I really here? Let me tell you why. I'm here because I started hearing about death threats. And I said to myself, death threats in Haywood County? Against who? And people started calling me up because there were thousands of customers that come through my restaurant. And then I said to myself, well, I started reading all these videos, and I'm hearing about death threats, and I'm not going to sit here and read you. I think it's superfluous to do that, but but there's a, there's a whole section on intimidating public officials. Now, we already know that not everybody agrees, and I don't, I'm not perfect, and nobody's perfect, but it's, the federal government makes it clear, you can't, you can't post things to intimidate the government. We would not have a society by doing that. You just can't do it. And and the good part about this right now is 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 nothing, at this point, nobody's been shot and killed, okay? But I take it seriously. I ran for US Senate three times. I know that one of these Commissioners ran three times and finally got in. I ran three times for US Senate, but it cost forty million to unseat a a US Senator, so my luck wasn't good, but I enjoyed what I did. But my point being this, I know federal law, and I understand intimidation, and I'm telling you that that anybody that posts something, if it leads to somebody getting injured, they can be charged with, they can be charged with a conspiracy. Now, I'm not saying anybody's done anything. The good part is nobody's been shot, nobody's blown up a building, but with Donald Trump, twice with the assassination, everybody should be able to be, do what they want to post. We know about the First Amendment. We all agree to the First Amendment, okay? But you, there's a limit to where somebody can get injured. So I, what I'd like to do as a private citizen is that I got a lot of phone calls from people that talked about the gentleman that is posting the the videos, and and he has a right to do it. But they're saying to me that he he has got so many wonderful videos that he has done, and I went and looked at him, and I believe his name is John Ward, and I've never seen anybody with with such talent, to be honest with you, and he really cares. But the one thing that that's bothering a lot of people is that we'd like those videos to come down. They're, they, they pose a threat, and and they need to come down because they'll stay up forever, okay? I don't know if y'all know about how to bring down a YouTube video, but it's very, very difficult to do it, unless, for some reason, the FBI would get involved, and then the courts get involved, and then it's going to come down. But until that, they'll stay up for years. So I want to be able to be the guy that helps everybody. I know it doesn't always work. So as a private citizen, I'd like to, I'd like to meet with Mr. Ward, and and I've done very well in my lifetime. I'm sixty-three, so I guess I can, I don't want to try to show off, but I can afford to throw some donation at him, and I'd like to offer him maybe two thousand or three thousand dollars. And I have a lot of people that want to donate a lot of things, but I, it's a negotiation. This is between me and and another private citizen, Mr. Ward, and I want him to bring down the videos. He's going to have a great career. He's helping people in this area and in Western Carolina. I love the state of North Carolina. I love Haywood County, but I want those videos brought down, and I want him to continue to do the great work that he's doing, and I'd like him to put another video up that he now realizes that that Haywood County does want to help. It's been made clear to him that anybody out there should be brought to the the Haywood County Commission, the Sheriff's Department. I've instructed Dottie, because I've instructed her now, that anybody that we find that needs food or that's afraid to come forward, to come to Dottie and our restaurant for the next sixty days, we'll provide all the free food we can give them, and her son, being the chief of police, will get them to where they've got to go in conjunction to the Haywood County Sheriff's Department. So I want to meet with Mr. Ward. I think he's got a great career, but he needs to bring the videos down. I've said that twice. And that's about all. We could go on with story after story down in Canton, what happened. I'll wrap this up, and we we couldn't communicate down there with no phones, no internet, and Elon Musk comes along with Starlink. The governor of Florida came in and with, you know, when we got hit both with Milton and and Hurricane Helene, he brought source, resources. But the biggest thing is all the calls we got from people around the country at our restaurant commending Haywood County's government, and we all know that nothing's perfect. But I don't want to see anybody shot, and this is real, folks. This is not, this is, it's nothing that Mr. Ward would do specifically, but he doesn't know who out there is watching. You've got fanatical, crazy people that are out across the country, okay? And we had one last thing, and then I'll wrap it up. You know, down in Miami, we had a fanatical guy that was watching videos on and on and on, and then he finally decided to drive five states to Miami, and when Gino Fasashi walked out of his house, he shot him in the head. These are, these are times you cannot play with. So we want everybody to be safe, and I'm coming from the standpoint of a citizen from Haywood County and now a resident. So I'm hoping that if Mr. Ward hears this, or or I I think that my understanding is one of the Commissioners might be meeting with him again, please, please, I'll donate with him. Let's just get those videos down. Let's work with with all Mr. Ward wants to do to help people, but the videos are what we want down. We don't want to see anybody injured. And that's about all I have to say. I did all the talking. I always do donate. That's the problem. That's the whole problem. That's about it. I thank all of, all five of you for your service. I hope you'll think about what I said, okay? Or Mr. Ward, at least, will meet with me somehow. Maybe you can get a meeting with him. A lot of people will donate, okay? Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Appreciate you coming out. Okay. That's the only person I have signed up to speak. Did anyone else want to address the board tonight? State your name and where you're from.
My name is Becky, and I would appreciate just as much time as he had, so please
Becky, Becky who?
Good citizen. You don't remember me from last time?
You'll, you'll need to sit down. If you're not
No, sir.
Yes, ma'am, you will.
So I do not have a freedom of speech. I do not have freedom of speech.
We are very transparent in this body.
Yes, sir, and you accepted my Becky Free, Good Citizen last time. Why are you not accepting it this time? Please do not trespass against me. I'm not here to harm anybody.
Please sit down, ma'am.
No, sir. I'm asking you for the same consideration that you just gave this gentleman. If we're here for the truth, then why won't you let me speak? Are you scared?
Nope.
Okay, then please.
You're scared to give your name and where you're from.
Please step away from me. My name is Becky, like I I said it. He accepted last meeting. My name was Becky Good Citizen. It was even posted in the newspaper as Becky Good Citizen. So I'm recognizing myself as the same person I did last time. Would anybody at the board like to say that my free speech is not welcomed?
Please sit down.
No? Nobody?
Ma'am, please sit down.
What I'll say is we're very transparent at this board, and we expect the folks that come to speak to us to do the same. So if you don't want to be transparent, we don't want to hear what you've got to say.
I am being transparent. My name is Becky.
Where are you from, Becky?
I am, I live here in North Carolina.
Haywood County?
Yes, Haywood County. Do I have to prove anything else to you?
We would expect you to tell us your first name, your last name, and you know us, and you know our name.
Does anybody know that I live here in Haywood County? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Thank you very much. I've proven myself to you. We good?
Please sit down.
No.
Please sit down.
Do I do not get freedom of speech? Sir, if you put your hands on me, please do not put your hands on me. We're being documented. I've been asked to leave a public meeting. Public meeting. I see how this goes.
Yes, you do.
Exactly. The good old boys club.
Would anyone else care to address the board? Okay, I'll close, I'll close the comment, I'll close, I'll close, I will close the public comment session. As you said, Howard, that's what we've got. As you said, Howard, that's what we get. Okay, the next item of business will be constituent concerns. Let me just say that we will say that most Haywood County offices will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, and Thursday, December twenty-sixth, in observance of the Christmas holiday, and Wednesday, January twenty-first, January first, twenty-twenty-five, in observance of New Year's. Solid waste facilities, including Materials Recovery Center, White Oak Landfield, and the convenience centers, will be closed Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, in observance of the Christmas holiday, and Wednesday, January first, in observance of New Year's Day. So if you got a bunch of wrapping paper on the day after Christmas that you'd like to recycle, or come to the Materials Recovery Center or the solid waste facilities, please bring those, except for Christmas Day and New Year's Day, okay? Okay, does anyone else have any other constituent concerns? If they want a voice?
County manager, I forgot to tell you this earlier. Canoe Branch off Highway two fifteen, they have a culvert that's full of rock, and this last little rain that we had put water out everywhere. It's just barely got enough, it's it's open just enough to carry the regular flow of water, and I didn't have time to reach out. Maybe you can call the DOT tomorrow for them. So Canoe Branch off Highway two fifteen. Also had some issues with the county manager on the debris pickup. I think he got word with SDR and got some of those, some of those issues taken care of, so I appreciate that. I think that's about all I've got right now.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'll move on to administrative agency reports and presentations, and we have the number, the first one will be the Fred Chapel Memorial Presentation. We have the landscape and floral designer Clara Curtis here this morning to speak to that. And Ms. Curtis, I'm sorry you had to witness this before, but we appreciate you coming, and you're doing a great thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair Inslee and all the Commissioners for having us here tonight. We, I'd like to introduce to you my friend Becky Chapel Anderson, who will begin the remarks for you.
I guess that name told you that I'm related to Fred Chapel. He was my big brother, and we got into trouble a lot, so I just want you to know that. And I'm here to talk about the memorial that we have, are going to put forward on behalf of Fred. It is a privately funded project, and I want to make that clear to everybody. It is not being paid with tax dollars or governmental funds. It's coming from the family, it's coming from friends, it's coming from a lot of the writers that are Fred's colleagues and so forth. So I wanted you to understand that before we got started. And we want to commission an art sculpture set in a newly designed, small entrance courtyard garden at the Canton branch of the library, Haywood Public Libraries. And it is going to be in memory of Fred. Fred had quite a career. He, in education, he taught for forty-some years at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro in their Writing and Literature Department. He was the author of thirty-seven books, of the first ten written about growing up in Canton on our farm in Beaver Dam, mm-hmm, and there were some interesting stories there. And then he was the State's Poet Laureate from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and two. So he loved the library. It's interesting that we chose the library as a site for this. And when he was about ten years old and was a reader of all readers, mother would come to town to do work, and he would slip off and go up to the old library that looked over the railroad tracks, with barely a floor in it, and grab up books and hide under the table to read while, while she was there. So the library seemed like the perfect place for a memorial for him. It came about, actually, were a request by our mayor, Zeb Smathers of Canton. He came to the Friends of the Canton Historical Museum Society and met with us and asked that would we consider doing a memorial for Fred. And his thoughts were, you, you honor those who have honored our community, and Canton definitely needed something positive to be happening during this time. So they formed a committee out of the Friends group of the museum there, and I'm happy to say a lot of them are behind me here in the, in our room to be with us during this. So the memorial committee was formed, and we looked at a lot of ideas and so forth, but we needed to get, to make sure we were ingrained in the Haywood County Public Library system. And so we had a meeting with the foundation, the Library Foundation, as, and ask if they would be the management of our money. It is a 501(c)(3), so that people who donate to it get their tax credit. They were very open to that, and that they would manage also the construction costs, pay the contractors who would be doing the work. And at their meeting, they all voted to do so, and Julie Weaver, the chairman of their board, is going to help oversee the project for us. Then we met with the Board of Trustees for the Public Library. They were very accepting, very supportive of this effort, and so here we are with the the Commissioners to work on our board. Our memorandum of understanding is the last final thing that needs to be done. So I'm going to now share with you Clara's hard work. Clara was the Director of Design, Landscape Design, Exhibits, and Education for over thirty years for the North Carolina Arboretum at Asheville, so she's got lots of talent. And she's also from Haywood County. And we made very sure that any contractor, anyone working on this project, was from Haywood County. It is us at our best to do the best.
So very briefly, I will just walk you through the design, and I know the Commissioners, I hope you can see this well on your monitors. It's a very simple courtyard, as Becky has shared, at the main entrance, a fully accessible site with access all the way around the central sculpture, which is set on a center line with both the children's library, and here you can see a sketch showing the alignment and the sculpture looking at the bay window of the children's library. Grace, Kathy and I have worked together on a number of large projects, and she is our Haywood County sculptor. I will just give her that commendation. And she has been working diligently on the sculpture, which features a stack of books with an open book on the top. The stack of books will all be labeled with titles that have been approved by the family of Fred Chapel, and the open book is a book that just came out posthumously that is called Ever After. In November, I was working with Grace. She and I selected this beautiful stone that you see on the lower left from the Rock Man, Tim Burris's business in Bethel. It was right along the Pigeon River, and they moved it immediately that day, was the week of Hurricane Helene. They moved the stone to Grace's Sculpture Studio, and here you see in progress in November. The sculpture will be completed when Grace returns from her private travels this winter, and the titles will be added to the spines of the book in quotations on the open book. We thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer questions. Becky mentioned that we have local landscape architect who lives here in Wayne, Waynesville, Ryan Ballard of the Osgood Landscape Architecture Company, and they're located in Asheville, and Louis Boyer with BH Granning will be our main construction company. We have their contracts in hand and can share more detail or answer any questions.
Have any questions? It sounds like you're doing it right, it sounds like to me, so.
When, several months ago, Mayor Smathers mentioned this project to me, and I guess he did it because my husband's family, he's in the audiences, from Beaver Dam, and they've lived there for years and years. So when I saw this item on the agenda, I did a little bit of research on your brother and found a couple of things, if I can just add. I found him to be very interesting. There was an article out of a, out of a UNC GG magazine, and it, the quote said, "Old Fred, as he was known to his friends and admirers, was the subject of the Fred Chapel, I am one of you forever", an excellent PBS documentary from twenty twenty-two. The opening sequence of the film shows the steep and sweeping western North Carolina landscape, and Fred Chapel looking out over the peaks. He says, "When you stand on the mountaintop here, you feel like a prophet, and I never felt like that way, I've never felt that way around cotton fields. I don't know. I carry the mountains with me wherever I go." And so that led me on to some other things, and he apparently was a poet and wrote a lot of poetry, and so I, I came across And so I, I came across this and I thought, you know, sometimes things are just fitting. And it's entitled, "Overheard in the Tea Room." Mary Ann, my dear, I'll say this for Ruth, though she never tells the truth, her lies are quite sincere. So I'm sure he had quite a personality, yes. So a great addition to, to the library in Canton and obviously his contribution to, to reading and to poetry was very important, so it's good that, it's a great thing.
Wow, and thank you. Nobody usually does that kind of research, so thank you so much. And it did open up a lot of who Fred was and I appreciate that. While I've got your attention for a moment though, I'm going to do a tribute. I'm going to do a tribute to a group of people who have worked with us for a long time. I've served on the Friends of the Canton Museum, History Museum. And as you know, we got flooded totally to the city twice. And that left us with no place to meet, no place to do our work or anything. And our neighbors up the street at the library offered their space to us for our meetings, for our work, even to do some archival work and all that kind of, it was amazing, the partnership. Caroline Potton is the director of the museum and Jennifer Stewart, who is here with us, is the director of the Canton Library. And I have to tell you, they work together as all organizations should. They have done programming together, they have done exhibitions together. Sometimes when we have newcomers come in, we make sure we share their interest or whatever. They have, they know what partnership is and they do it beautifully. And I wanted to do that. And then I want to make a tribute also to the library. Kathy Bosler has been with us at every meeting and every step of the way and has helped us a lot understand this. And Julie Weaver, as Chair of the Board for the Foundation, has agreed to do the paperwork and all that it takes to manage our money for this, this project. We could not have better citizenship, we could not have better leadership and it certainly says a whole lot about community. So I want to thank them.
Okay, so Jennifer, I know you're on the library board, so do you want to make a mention?
Mr. Chairman, that, that item is number twelve on the consent agenda. Can we amend the agenda to go ahead and pull that out and vote on that separately right now to fully recognize Mr. Chapel?
Sure.
I, I believe you would get to the discussion adjustment of the agenda.
When we, when we get there?
Yeah, we'll, yeah.
We'll, we'll move that right to the top.
Yeah.
I think we will.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, I was a little out of order and, and I'm always getting on everybody else for being out of order, so. Okay, next is this tropical storm Helene recovery updates and we have our emergency services director Travis Donaldson and is someone, Matt, are you going to speak? Okay, with the sheriff? Okay, go ahead Travis. I appreciate you being out tonight.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Couple of quick updates for us. More public awareness than anything. All of our information's readyhaywood.gov, or excuse me, dot com to be able to, to get our most up-to-date information for what's going on with recovery as, as well as response for Helene. I'll go over a couple of quick numbers for debris pickup as of this morning. A total of thirty-three point nine thousand cubic yards have been picked up in Haywood County. That is including the towns of Waynesville, Canton, Clyde and Maggie, as well as in the county itself. Couple of other quick updates, a couple deadlines as well. January seventh is the new deadline for disaster unemployment. They've extended that assistance. Phone number for that service is nine one nine six two nine three eight five seven. Another deadline coming up is January seventh for individual assistance for those applying to FEMA, for financial assistance with effects from Helene. Disaster Recovery Center, again for everybody, is at the High Tech Center at 112 Industrial Park Drive. The website for disaster assistance is disaster sense, disasterassistance.gov. The DRC there at the High Tech Center is still open Monday through Friday, eight to six and Saturday from nine to two. It is closed on Sunday. On December thirteenth, just keeping track of numbers, there were thirty-three total visitors with sixteen of those being new visitors to the DRC to look at services and, and become registered for assistance. Couple of other recovery programs going on right now. Lutheran Disaster Response and the Mennonite Disaster Services are working on bridges and road rebuilding. Folks can visit their website at ldrcarolinas.org/bridging-together, or bridging-dash-together forward slash, or call seven oh four six three three four eight six two. And a reminder to everybody that free disaster legal service is still available. Phone number for that service is eight six six two one nine five two six two. It's legalaidnc.org/disaster. One other recovery program to mention on here is Baptist on a Mission are starting to, to look at rebuilding missions and getting folks kind of back in their house. You can apply online for that service at baptistonthemission.org. As far as hazard mitigation goes in Haywood County, for the property acquisitions, buyout programs, everybody knows elevation for those that can potentially raise their home above flood, floodwater levels. Reconstruction, moving folks to a safer area of their property and rebuilding a, a house as well as landslide assistance, which is a new program that FEMA rolled out and North Carolina is kind of helping FEMA work together and pioneering what landslide assistance and hazard mitigation looks like. We're collecting those applications still at, at our office. You can email mitigation@haywoodcountync.gov or contact Cody Grassi at eight two eight four seven six oh two eight five. That hazard mitigation information's also available on Ready Haywood. You can pick up applications in person as well as meet with somebody face-to-face at 141 Hemlock Street in Waynesville. Again, those are our updates for hazard mitigation. There's also, just for numbers, we've got fifteen completed applications for hazard mitigation. Those are mainly for acquisition and/or this landslide assistance program. Twelve are currently in progress and we're working through an interest list of around a hundred folks. Be glad to answer any questions. Sorry, I was a little long-winded, I was trying to knock everything out.
Can you, sorry, can you, two things. So ldrcarolinas.org, is that private bridges and driveways?
Correct.
I know that was a big deal with tropical storm Fred, it was very hard to get assistance for that. So that's very important that people are aware that that is available. And then the landslide assistance, that's new, that's something that I've talked to Kevin Corbin and some other people about because there is, he's an insurance agent and I was for a long time. Your homeowner's insurance, or really even if you had flood insurance, doesn't cover you for landslide. There is no coverage related to an insurance policy for landslide. So that's, that is a great new program and I'm, I'll be curious to see how that progresses along because that has definitely impacted a lot of people here and will continue as we develop mountains and, and things along that line. Haywood County, y'all probably know this, but Haywood County was very proactive years ago in the slope ordinance and our slope ordinance has been copied by a lot of other counties and, but even as good as ours is, it still was impacted because of this tremendous amount of water. So can you give us an update on that in the future as you see how that program works and people are able, not to put you on the spot, but that's something that's very, very new. We're not, we've not seen help for that anywhere before.
Yeah, and we're, you know, all the other counties that were affected are, you know, don't have that same opportunity, but everybody's kind of pioneering that program together.
That's good.
And, and we're trying to figure it out and work together with our state and federal partners and, and get some help for some folks that before wasn't available.
Yeah, that's good. Like they don't see landslides on the coastal counties?
Nope.
Perhaps, are there any assistance for these people that couldn't get out, that went ahead and fixed their own bridges some, or are there any kind of help for that?
I would direct folks to, to apply to FEMA for individual assistance if they've already made repairs. If you're making repairs, always be sure to save your receipts that way if you're able to get some assistance from FEMA through individual assistance, that, that you can get that. To think of the big thing too, that one deadline is that individual assistance. January seventh, if folks are on the fence, you know, that's a hard deadline coming up and we don't want folks to miss out on that.
All right, thank you.
Why do you think people have been slow to respond? You said on December the thirteenth, there were sixteen new visitors?
Yeah, and consistently as, as, I've watched those numbers come in on those reports and that's kind of where we've been averaging new visitors on their data is ten, ten to twenty a day trickling in. And then thirty to forty repeat, or excuse me, thirty to forty total. So about half of those are follow-ups and the other half are, are new folks that are coming in to see if something is available, so.
Do you think that's because they've gotten answers maybe for their insurance companies? That there was not coverage available or?
That's definitely a good possibility. Or, you know, as folks are, are starting to make a few repairs and, you know, things might, starting to be getting a little tight, they seeking some funding assistance, so.
So that deadline has been extended now until January the seventh?
Correct.
Yeah. Do you think that'll be the final extension or do you know?
It's, it's hard to know. It, it truly is. I do know that there's always a chance, but we'll see.
I know with some people, it's started a repair and then they found out that it's worse than what they'd thought, you know? If it's ripping up a floor and then they realize it's climbed the walls and gotten insulation and at that point they decide to apply. So I'd say that's some of that as well.
Yeah, and on the roads and bridges, if they'll keep up with their receipts, especially if it's going to more than one or two houses, you know, several houses, they can probably get reimbursed if they'll, if they'll keep their receipts and, you know, and apply, if you will. There's a good chance, you know, and I've heard of people that did. So, and that was during Fred when they supposedly weren't getting anything, but we did. So, and I think with this, with this event, we have a lot more national coverage, the good national coverage I might say, that we've been getting, that shows really the devastation and the need that we have. And, and hopefully, you know, hopefully the Congress will fund FEMA to levels that we didn't get before. And, and that's always what we're waiting on to be, you know? And so hopefully that'll happen soon, and soon.
And go back there on a point there Kevin. For folks that have these orphaned private roads, as we call them, if there are multiple people that live on these roads and there's road damage, if folks will apply together for individual assistance and pool their money together to be able to make these repairs, that's also a key point is for these neighbors to work together if they do have a, a shared road that needs repaired. But again, they need to do that through FEMA, through individual assistance and, again, save those receipts and, and seek out that assistance.
Right. Taking pictures also helps, is that correct?
Yeah. Yep. Document everything that you possibly can.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good. And as I said, you know, FEMA's looking out for taxpayer money, that's what we want them to do and that's why it takes so long because you see a lot of people trying to, to rip off the government by, you know, either they weren't flooded, we've seen that where they weren't flooded and said they were even though they weren't, couldn't prove they were. And so they've just, you know, they got to make sure that people are, you know, what they're saying is there and they're just looking out for our money to make sure that happens and that takes time unfortunately. But there's a good reason for it was, it takes time is because they're making sure the taxpayer money isn't wasted. Anybody else? Okay, thank you Travis.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, come on up Matt. Thank you, how are you?
I'm good. Really everything's been back to normal for us. We've had some follow-up with homelessness, some, a few, very few reports of, since the last meeting with some folks that may or not be living in tents or homeless camps. We've checked those, the sheriff, sheriff checked one of those himself. All of those have been either nonexistent when we get there or they were folks that were homeless prior to the flood, had nothing to do with the flood and didn't want anything to do with us. So that is, that's really all I have.
So you haven't found anybody living in a tent that didn't want to be there, actually?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought because we take care of our people here, whether people want to believe it or not, we do. And I know we had one, somebody told me about a video that somebody made and said these people were flood victims and they're living in a tent. They were living in a tent, they were not flood victims, they were trying to rip off the government. And so, and we know that it didn't flood because, you know, we, we know where the flood happened. So you've got that going on. And I know you guys are going to be on top of any scams that are out there and, and I appreciate that because they are out there. And, you know, people that are not from here, they see things that are made up and not true and then it gets them to give money and then that money goes into somebody's pocket and it doesn't help any flood victims. And nothing makes me madder than that. So I appreciate y'all standing on top of that and actually, you know, putting out that. That's not misinformation, it's really just lies is what it is and they keep perpetuating and it's unfortunate.
Yes, sir. One of the ones that we followed up on in Waynesville was sent to us as an information piece and then a YouTube video. And then when we researched it, they had actually been there for almost a year.
Yep.
Had absolutely nothing to do with the flood, so.
Yeah, yeah. So we know that's going on too, so that's going on everywhere, so.
I appreciate y'all doing that. That same situation is probably the one I also called Chief Adams with Waynesville about because it was inside the city limits.
Correct, that's it.
And, yeah, they, that's been ongoing since long, about six months before the flood and March, mm-hmm. And just to be clear, the meter was pulled for non-payment.
Yep.
And it was not anything related to our negligence or oversight or anything like that. So it's very important that what we, you have to research this stuff folks.
Yep.
Can't just take it at face value. Be glad to help anybody, we've got plenty of resources in our community if we have somebody that, that is in need. That's the other thing, is I know of a case today where somebody was, contacted Mountain Projects and they were, they were situated today, so we have plenty of resources available if there is a need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I too that, I mean, that particular family that we're talking about, even though they wasn't affected by the flood, once we found out there was a need there, we still offered them help, which they refused, but that's happened time and time again, you know? And I think we've all, all five of us have witnessed that, so anybody that does need help, we're still going to help them. We always have, you know, whether it's through a board that we, each one of us sit on, each one of us sits on numerous boards and if there's a need there, I will always try to take care of it.
And we do, so. But I appreciate that, you know, we have a very caring community. We've taken care of our own. And it's funny, you know, we were all getting contact saying we need to do this and do that. They didn't even know what they were talking about, because they're not from here. If you ever got them on conversation, basically, we usually turned them around, because they didn't know what was going on here, because they're not from here. And so, you know, the people from here know what's going on, and nobody from here has contacted us. With, if they did, they had a need, and if that need was taken care of. And, which is what Haywood County does, we take care of our own. We always have and we always will.
We've had some folks come by the office or reach out that had needs, like Miss Best said. You know, we've connected them with the resources that they've needed or put them in the right direction, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate Mountain Projects, Brandon. I know Patsy has a big heart and Si, Si Simmons. So, I mean, we've, they've reached out to people and helped them, and helped people get, you know, get what they needed and everything, so.
You know, I sit on that board, and I know over the years, I've seen a lot of things they've done throughout our community. You know, they actually save the taxpayers a lot of money by doing the things that they do. And it's just a huge need anywhere, but it's good to know that Patsy and Si both, both of them have big hearts. And anytime there's a need that we can't help with necessarily, I'll reach out to them, and they've always done what they had to do. So they've helped numerous folks this week. I know Kevin and I both spoke to several, several families, and we've reached out to these people and met the needs for them, so.
Okay. I'm glad the weather's a little warmer, too.
Yeah, always helps.
Okay, appreciate those presentations. All right, next will be discussion, the judge wanted to move, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move item number 12 on the consent agenda, move it out to be voted on separately, and I'd like to move it to the first item on the regular agenda to give it due diligence. It needs to be, needs to be.
Okay, we'll just call it 1A. Okay, and we'll do it right this week. Okay. Got any motion to do that? No, okay, I have a motion.
Yes, I made that motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we will go to the consent agenda. And we have a lot, 15 items on the consent agenda, excepting number 12. Does anybody have any question on any of those 15 items less than number 12?
There are a couple items on here in relation to Helene. I just want to make mention to item nine and 10, and just, just mention those out separately. I think from the very beginning, when the governor came and our state representatives, we lobbied them. They came to our EOC, they came independently across the county. We lobbied our state, our federal representatives, to cut the red tape, get things expedited to where we could help people. It takes time to cut the red tape, and I think we saw some of that happen here just in the recent few days. We also lobbied for our emergency heat assistance because of Hurricane Helene. We usually get appropriation from the state for that, and so we're lobbying, we did lobby for that, because there's going to be a big need for all these, this recovery. And I know, I personally was in a meeting in Raleigh where we, and Commissioner Best and I went to a meeting in Burke County where all the affected counties, all the affected counties there were lobbying our state and federal officials to certainly kick back some funding our way. And I think we're seeing some results with that. You know, you have to put your feet under the table, you have to make the trip, you have to have your voice heard. And so I think we're seeing some of that pay off now, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make mention of those two items.
Right, okay.
And I do make a motion, if no one else has anything, I do make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with item number 12 taken down to the regular agenda.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next order of business will be item number 1A, is what I'm calling it, which is to request approval of the MOU for Fred Chapel Memorial at the Canton Branch of the Haywood County Public Library.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make that motion, and with that motion, I would like to read a poem that Mr. Chapel wrote. We've had some unusual meetings here recently, kind of some jaw droppers, so I guess this is a little unusual as well. So I will read a poem that Mr. Chapel wrote. It's one of his top five poems that was voted on by his peers, and it kind of resounded to me, because you'll understand when I read the poem. My, my parents were married for 71 years, and my dad passed away suddenly. There at home, we were expecting that he had a bad heart valve. I stayed with my mother, continued on with her for two years after that, every other night. And not hardly a night went by, but what my mother didn't say, she missed my dad. So that bond of marriage rang true for her, and I think Mr. Chapel captures this in one of his top five poems. Now, I'll read it here now. The title of the poem is "Time When." The woman pauses her needle and stares before her. Silently, she comes to know a man she loved, and sudden years gone by has died. From him, she learned the many thousand ways the world is not. Strange how the power of memory increases when objects of its longing are taken away. Strange that the woman has no power to weep. For half an hour, she sits alone, examining the shapeless silence with its dark message. And then she puts her sewing by and rises to address new ceremonies of her altered life, to bear her sorrow gracefully as a tree bears snow. Fred Chapel.
Very nice.
So I do make that motion to accept this MOU in honor of Mr. Chapel, a Haywood County native.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, here now, everyone in the cap is saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, thank you. Looking forward to seeing that, okay. Okay, next on the regular agenda was, is item one, is to request approval to negotiate a contract with Vanoy Construction based on the guaranteed maximum price and approval of the county manager to sign, to sign all contract documents. Tim Sisk, our facilities director, is here to speak to that.
Good evening Commissioners. Just as it's read, Mr. Chairman, this is a request approval to contract with, or negotiate a contract with Vanoy for the construction of our EMS base, satellite EMS base at the Russ Avenue and Moonee Cove site. We went through quite a bit of work to get to design, and members of the design team are here this evening, if there's any questions. But that's, that's about all it is, is a request to negotiate.
Any questions?
I know there's quite a bit difference price-wise. Can you explain the difference there, Tim?
I will ask some of the design team to come up, and I will defer those questions to those folks.
My name's Lance Haney with Vanoy Construction. I think your question was the difference between the SD estimate and the current GMP. A large majority of that is that when we started this project, there were some, I'm not sure if folks are familiar with Davis-Bacon prevailing wage requirements, that was driving some cost at the SD estimate phase. That's no longer a requirement, we don't think. So all that money was dropped out of the estimate when we went to the 100% CD column. I think the, a lot of it, to add to that, is just the competition that we got as far as subcontractor coverage. If you look at some of the backup, the sheets that are later in the packet that you have, you can see that we got three, four, sometimes even five quotes for each trade package. And with, with that coverage comes competition and in turn drives some costs down.
Just everybody's busy right now. I know how it is.
Everyone is certainly busy, but everyone also, you know, most of the folks that are physically onsite are alary workers. So they, they, they want their folks to work, you know, even, even if, you know, there's some consequences of the storm that are still going on, folks very much want their, their people to be able to work, so they, they are still going after projects similar to before the storm.
Okay, that's good to hear. Any other questions on that?
If this is awarded, what's the timeline look like?
Um, right now, we were, we show this as a eighth month, eight-month duration to build, and we were tracking that it would begin sometime spring 2025.
I would like to say, just as a point of information, we've had some big projects over the last several months, and I, the manager reminded us earlier that the old armory project and this project combined is about $6 million worth of public works, construction. And due to some good investments, some grant monies that we got, I think we're only going to seize $300 and some thousand dollars of actual taxpayer, county taxpayer funds. Is that correct, Mr. Morehead?
That, that's rounding, of course, but yeah, the, between phase one and phase two at the armory, we've taken care of with CDBG funds, through a lot of work. It's to get those grants and get that project rolling. And then the recovery funds that are being used for the majority of this project, along with, like you said, some investment earnings, and then some, some county local tax dollars. I think total for both projects, we would have less than $350,000 in both of those projects in local dollars, and well over $6 million when everything's finished through those projects. So it's a pretty good return on our investment, I think.
Yes, sir, I agree.
It was obvious how important the armory was during hurricane, because we had, you know, places to house folks, especially in the immediate. But both of these projects will be related to improved response time from EMS, because the armory will, it houses, I guess, an EMS base now, but we're going to improve that facility just another step further. And then this facility that will be on Russ Avenue will replace where we're driving out of that other location, and this will just increase response time, response time across the county. So it, it, yeah, definitely saves lives and goes directly back to the residents that live here. So definitely an improved service.
I don't think he's going to say it, but it was a good job by the county manager to move these monies around to figure it all out. So we appreciate that, and, and the staff.
Christian.
And Christian. So it's Christian instead of the county manager, is what you're saying.
There's a lot of chefs in the kitchen on some of these things, so.
I was trying to brag on Brian a little bit, but Christian stole these thunder. Anyway, we do, we have an excellent staff. And anybody that ever wants to question our finances, I'd challenge them, you know, because got an excellent staff that always stays on top of things. And this is a good example of that, you know, they're saving, saving the taxpayers locally some money, and we appreciate that.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve item one?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, guys. Yeah, get to work, right? Oh, okay. I'll point at both of you, hell, then. Okay, item two of the regular agenda is to request approval of a budget amendment for $1,107,713 master facilities, Russ Avenue EMS base, to appropriate interest earned on the 2024 limited obligation bonds in the amount of $820,487, and to appropriate fund balance in the amount of $287,226 to supplement budgeted funds to construct additional EMS base off Russ Avenue. Christian, our finance director.
Yes, this is the budget amendment to get us to the GMP as presented in number one. We have earned in just a few months, $820,487 on our lobs that we issued earlier this year. So we're going to take that money and then $287,226 out of fund balance to get us to the GMP so we can get this EMS base built.
Okay, so what is LOB?
Limited Obligation Bonds. Those are the bonds we issued for the jail expansion, and those sit in an account and earn interest, just like a, like a checking account, so.
Right, okay. All right, well, that was a good move. Okay, any other questions? It's pretty self-explanatory. Can I have a motion to approve item two?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Christian. Okay, the first, the next order of business is appointments. The first one, we have four, is to request approval of the appointment of Jessica Winkle to serve as the VAHA Health Representatives on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee, or the JCPC, as we call it.
I, I serve on that board, Mr. Chairman, and she's the VAHA Health Representative, and I make that motion to approve her.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number two of appointments is to request approval of a reappointment of Jim Owens, Angie Frisby, and Chad King to the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Board, or the TDA Board.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, is at the December 4th, 2024 meeting, the TDA voted unanimously to recommend Mr. Owens, Ms. Frisby, and Mr. King for reappointment.
I serve on that board, and they've all been fine members, and so I would make that, be in agreement, we'd make that motion, request approval for reappointment for those three people.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Number three, request approval of appointment of Terry Clark to the Smoky Mountain Events Center Board fulfilling an unexpired term through March 7th, 2025. I will say, we interviewed Mr. Clark, and he was a very good applicant. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion, we approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any, see, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Item number four is to request approval of one appointment by vote, by vote, one position open for a tourism-related business to the Haywood County Tourism Development Board, which is the TDA Board. Thank you. We'll do that by ballot.
You have nominated, well, you've appointed by election, Bridget Shaughnessy as the member of the Haywood County Tourism Development Authority Board, one seat representing a tourism-related business, fulfilling a term through December 31, 2027.
Okay. Okay, so that, we don't have to run on that, we did. Okay, that concludes the business. Before the board, I do want to make a comment on the disturbance that we had. If you're going to, I thought about this in the last meeting, if you're going to make comments to this board, I want to know what your name is and what area you're from, in the county or the nation. This lady appeared last time I let her go. She had on a sweatshirt that had a Minnesota Wild Hockey Team emblem on it. This lady appeared last time I let her go. She had on a sweatshirt that had a Minnesota Wild Hockey Team emblem on it. Based on her speech, she sounds like she's from the Midwest. She does have a right to speak. But if you, if you want to have the privilege to speak before this board, our community needs to know who you are and where you're from. So that's the way I feel about it. We're transparent. Our meetings are televised. Everybody knows who we are. We've had hundreds of comments from people who aren't from our community because they watched this, these videos. Oh, yeah, maybe probably thousands. And it gets, it's getting pretty old, to be honest with you, because people aren't informed on what's going on in our community. And as I said, no one in this community has contacted us about any of this. So if someone wants to spoon feed the nation things that aren't true, they can do that. But, you know, it's, it's really getting old from people contacting us on situations and issues they had, they know nothing about. And what it does is it gives our community a black eye. It gives our churches a black eye as if we're not doing anything for to help our people. And we are helping our people. Sheriff couldn't find anybody in tents. I talked to a guy this week that said he had drove around the county into every nook and cranny and he's from here and lived here all his life and he couldn't find anybody in a tent.
That didn't want to be.
That didn't want to be.
Yeah, they didn't want to be.
There's some intense.
There are people in tents because.
Floodings were there before and they want to be, so.
And if they want to live that way, they can, you know, but they're not flood victims. And if they are, that's the way they want to live. They've had opportunity to have motel rooms. They can get Airbnbs. We have all kinds of lodging here that's available. You know, we're a tourism community. This is the, the dead season for tourism. So we have plenty of space available if somebody wants to take advantage of it. So if you hear something that's not true, it's probably not true. Because some of the things that people write me that say, are you doing this? And it's like, that, that probably doesn't even happen in, in a third world country, let alone here. So we're taking care of our people as the, as the sheriff chief deputy just said. So I just wanted to make that comment. Also, Mr. Nepper, I did give him some extra time. I also gave this, some guy from Boone, he, he was up there for probably as long as he was. And I don't really like to do that. I really wish people would finish their comments early, but Mr. Nepper had something he wanted to say. And he's concerned about his community, as he said, and he's been here for a long time. And I appreciate his comments. His comments were spot on and, and we're going to, we're going to continue doing the job that people appoint us to do, that they elected us to do. We're going to make sure our people are safe, and they are. And we're, we're going to make sure we follow up. When, if you're breaking the law, if you're stealing from, from the governments, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to find you. We're going to prosecute you because that's what our sheriff does. He's very much into solving crimes and finding out about them. So if, if you, if you want to come to Haywood County and try to rip us off, we, we, we do have a sheriff that, that he'll, he'll be after you, if you will. So. But, and I know there's some scams going on out there. It's unfortunate that people get on the internet and put out things that aren't true to harass people in this community who have been working almost 24/7, at least in my mind I have, to try to solve the problems that we've been put, you know, it's been faced before us and it's not appreciated. But like I say, if you're going to come before this body and you're going to address us, you're going to give us your name and I want to know where you're from. And that, that's, that's just being respectful for us. And when you're respecting us, you're respecting our community. If you don't respect us, you don't respect our community. We've all gotten voted into office by a majority of votes. And I think Brandon and I, last time, have gotten the most votes of any commissioner in Haywood County history. So that's, that says something right there. It's because people know us and they trust us. They see us in the grocery store, they see us at church, they see us at community events and they know us and they trust us and they know our heart and they know what we do. So I just want to give you all, you know, a pat on the back for having to face all this. And, and I appreciate, you know, everybody hanging in there and, and, and everybody, you know, really, really keeping a good attitude. Because there is, there's a lot of misery out there and I can't stand to somebody, see somebody trying to profit off the misery of our community. And that's what we're having, that's what we're facing right now. And I know I've mucked out a house and my family's mucked out houses and we've, it, it's hard work. If, if folks want to come and help us, that's great. And, and I really appreciate Baptist on Missions and these other groups that Travis was talking about. They've come to our community, volunteers, if you will. They come to our community and, and they basically sleep. They don't sleep, I think they sleep over at Craftview Church. They don't even sleep in a, I don't know what they have to sleep on there, probably cots. But they come to our community and work and we don't need someone coming in here like we're not taking care of our people. And we have people coming in from out of the area to help everyone. And, you know, sorry, I'm going on and on. But anyway, that's, anybody else who wants to say anything?
Can I say, I would have said it earlier, but I didn't see Tommy come in up there. I just, I went to a event yesterday that Tommy and some others, the local groups were putting on. It was getting toys for the kids and stuff. It probably about, I'd, I'd say there's probably 300 people down there. And they really put on a good thing for the, the kids and families. So the kids would have a, a good Christmas. There's, there's, I think, three organizations there, wasn't it? And they, and they did an excellent job. And I've never seen them more as much direction, everything, everything just fell just like that. And I mean, they fed everybody, took care of all the kids. All the kids got toys, bicycles and stuff. And I wanted to praise them a little bit because they, I mean, they did an excellent job and they, they've helped, got people in campers. They've done a lot of stuff and they're local people and they, they've really reached out and helped our people a whole lot too. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew that they were really working night and day helping our people too. Thank you, Tom.
Now just to add what you said, you know, we, we appreciate those folks that do come in, that really want to help and make a difference. And we've had hundreds, if not thousands, of folks that's come in from other churches, from outside our state. But when somebody wants to come up here, as Chairman Enzley said, and, and wants their three minutes of fame that's not from around here, has no idea what we're doing, you know, we don't want to waste our time with that. So that's what it boils down to. And if they're not going to be transparent with us and tell us who they are and where they're from, you know, if, if they're not from here and they just want to get that three minutes of fame, like I said, we, we don't want to waste our time. So. We're, we're very transparent. As I said, we're a transparent board. We're transparent with everything we do. They know our names, they know what we do. And we, we respect the same or expect the same from somebody that wants to address this board and talk to us. I, I agree 100% with what you said.
Yeah, so it, you know, we, all of us raised our hands and asked, we, you know, volunteered or were encouraged by friends and family to run for this position. And not all, the days are going to be good days and not all the days are going to be easy days. And sometimes we have to make some really tough and hard decisions. And it's easy to get caught up in how difficult that can be. But the goodness of our community is amazing. I have been so grateful and humbled by the people, just common, everyday residents that live here that have really been able to put their hands on the plow and keep their head down and make things happen for, you know, our neighbors. I mean, we've seen people that have shared and found, they've shared their own houses, they have found housing for other people and done it the right way. They have put food on tables and clothes on backs and toys under Christmas trees. And it is, it is touching and humbling every day to get to serve with you and beside you in this community. It is Christmas. It has been, I guess, a little challenging and sad for all of us, but we are Haywood County and we are resilient and brighter days are coming. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve and I wish all of you Merry Christmas.
Well, this is the last meeting of 2024. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with what everyone has said. I'm not going to recover that ground. So I would like to wish everyone Merry Christmas. Lord willing, we'll see you next year. But I'll leave you with this. We do celebrate Christmas here in a few days. It's the most celebrated holiday around the world. We celebrate the birth of Christ. That's why it's named Christmas. And so I would like to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas. And I want to read, as we close, the Gospel of Luke said, glory to God in the highest and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, and, and, you know, Merry Christmas, everybody. So I'll.
I didn't say that neither, I guess. I need to finish that up with a Merry Christmas. You know, our county's been through a whole lot this past year and actually this whole last term, as we've talked about many times. And, you know, it's times like this, this time of year when you're very thankful for your friends and your family and our community. And as Commissioner Best said, us mountain folks are very resilient and we get knocked down, we get back up. So that's what we're doing and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and I hope everybody has a good, prosperous and healthy New Year.
Christmas.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion when adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and be safe.